I'm not saying it's right, don't get me wrong.
The problem with that is the uh statute of limitations.
I'm not saying it's right.
If it was within the statute of limitations, there wouldn't have been any problems.
Sure.
I certainly would have voted for it.
Yeah.
But with camera phone checks.
No.
Okay, but. Do that.
So anyway, I just want to tell you guys.
Was Casey gonna call Chris?
Yeah.
You just. Casey is a. So level headed, I mean.
He's he's a score shooter.
I don't care what side he's on, he's gonna find out the facts.
Well.
You know what I mean, he just he just, score shooter is a good, good way to put it.
Yeah. Yeah, you know. Yeah, so I I think that's a win here.
I would trust him a hundred percent.
Yeah, me too. Here's the Jim Allen's application.
Oh, okay.
You know the conservation board?
Yeah.
This here's the person will be going for the conservation board, Jim Allen.
Lieutenant Towns.
He's out real late.
And that's on for days.
Yeah.
Who's leaving the board?
Nathan Rocky.
Yeah, I guess he did resign.
Is this guy the only one we had, the only one?
Guys didn't advertise though, you said you were going to.
Yeah, it was on the uh website.
Hi, don't look at me, I have nothing.
It wasn't in the Telegraph and it hasn't been on your board.
I. It was on the. I know it was on the, well, I was told it was on the uh website. For ten days or whatever. I did call another guy to see if he would.
Says he wanted an artwork.
Didn't do it, he didn't want to, so.
Well. They had to.
Kinda looks like a overdubbing.
Yeah. Okay.
Sure is, this is our. This is everything.
Oh yeah, fast one.
Quick, thank you. Yeah, it wasn't really quick, wasn't it? Roadside. It was roadside. Years of service, nine forty-five.
Who's that involved, you know?
What's that?
Years of service.
Oh my goodness, we got it.
Did you get one of these?
Got about twenty of them.
Oh, apparently I did.
That on your.
I don't know where it's.
Mine was just laying there.
Well, it, yeah, there it is. It was under my desk, it slopped.
Yeah, a lot of them all in one.
That's an ISAC award. Just breathe in here.
Huh?
It's actually an ISAC award.
Oh, the years of services. Hmm. Okay, you gotta approve this thing, get it rolling.
Hey, I I need to be on the twenty-five year deal.
Huh?
I had twenty-five years in here before I quit. It's a long time. Supposedly calling me a quitter, huh?
So what do you think?
Tony Gruber? He kinda seems like he's in here ten years. Yeah, my gosh, who was here?
Good morning, Karen.
One of us, yeah, that's moved.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And it's cool. Music artists. Like you're down here. Like you're in.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, exactly.
But. See, he's not gonna go through all that.
How's Karen today?
Wonderful, Monday, just kinda love it, right?
Yeah.
Again, oh, get to see those, oh, that's true, as a bright spot.
Yeah.
Anna. Anna Mary.
High line safety.
She was only.
I got one of these in orange.
High line.
Probably.
And now, no.
I don't think. There you go. Made market.
Good morning, Larry.
See, there's probably a real old PRD there. Yeah.
I have this in my email today, guys, it's from that Dunlap lady that does the Bible readings.
Precedent.
I think we're reading.
Okay.
That Phyllis, yep. So she wants to know, um, does a person have to sit okay to use that one anytime? We have a group of eight or so who are thinking of meeting there on Sunday evening and just singing a few songs, a time of prayer, and maybe a short message. Is that permissible without the supervisor's permission?
We've always, we've always given permission before. Yeah, I guess I don't really need them.
I don't, I would not have a problem with it once, once a week, no, I don't.
You don't need okay this once a week. I think surprise the city, doesn't it?
Yeah, I know, why, we've always been in charge of the courthouse.
Well, that's just it, it's courthouse. Courthouse law.
Heck, call it or not, that's fine, she does.
I, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, all right, I'll get back to her today then, thank you guys.
You bet.
Good morning.
Well, what's it feel like to be laid off?
Oh, no.
What do you think?
I always enjoyed it.
Yeah, I'm gonna be done that bill.
Yeah. Are you the, what, when we're. You gonna go here for that? Twenty-first. When are we gonna have that?
Heather.
I don't sure. Twenty-first.
Yeah, the twenty-first, you have two hearings, I believe.
Okay, so Bill, you still gonna be here? I will be here.
No, um, pre-precinct one, let me see.
Yeah, the. Precincting one, and.
So if you guys uh go for that one.
I will be. Let me give you dates, I will not be in.
Yeah, is that easier?
It's backwards, I think. Yeah.
Okay, the twenty-eighth of August, I will be gone. And then the. Um, and then the fifth of September.
Okay, that's just, okay.
Cause that's a Tuesday.
Yes.
Because that's Labor Day weekend, so that'd be a Tuesday.
Um, I don't know, probably, I'll be on the phone, I don't recall when you're that day either.
Right.
That's a, if you can be on the phone, that that's good.
Otherwise.
The two of you could still do it, can't they?
Yep, otherwise you could move it to the fifth, that would be better.
Um.
You don't have to move it to Tuesday, you can move it to Wednesday, the fifth, unless your day.
You mean, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be gone.
See, I'll be the gone the sixth.
I can't.
But, okay, yeah.
But yeah, I won't, we won't be on until the seventh.
This one includes overrun. Maybe I wanna reset my.
Yeah, whenever you're hearing this.
So what I was gonna suggest is.
Quit yourself, good, enjoy the rodeo Friday night, I got plenty guys there.
Oh, Monday.
I would just stand, there's nobody's gonna.
Bro, get the, what are you doing?
Did you ride a hole?
Yeah.
Huh?
There was a little dis.
No, you could.
They had more on Saturdays, we must have. Yeah. It's just for the precinct, so we'll have discussions.
Prefer to do that, maybe.
Why don't we, is there so much to discuss?
Yeah, that's true, except you guys.
Because.
I mean, we can discuss.
Okay, or.
And the twenty-first, you all three.
Eight.
Yeah, so, yes, it's on the third one.
I was gonna say, can you just move it to the third one?
I'm not too far behind you.
Two weeks instead of just one.
Yep, yep, the third one.
You'll leave your first two the same.
And then do September twelve.
And then do September eleven for the one.
Yeah, eleven, cause it's.
Third one? After that, then the next, because Monday I will be here.
Okay.
On the.
On the eleven?
I will be here on the eleventh, I will be here eighteen.
Okay.
Okay.
So the twenty-first, the twenty-eighth, and the eleven.
Eleven.
That sound good? Okay.
Cause they can run the second reading without me here.
Yep.
Well, if we all agree to it now.
Yeah.
I mean, I can. It's just.
That's all.
We can just say, well, we've all discussed.
So this is on the agenda to act on today, so we'll do those dates then, okay?
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
If you, if you want to act on it.
On the map.
No, you're gonna be gone those two days, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause one is your deadline to give it into, your one.
To, uh, it's uh December.
December.
Let's see up.
Yeah, we just wanted to get it done.
Yeah.
As quick, you know, speedily as we can, so that gives us time to send it to the state, because then they have to approve it.
Right.
Yeah, hopefully they'll do it fairly quickly, cause it's not everybody redistricting.
Yeah.
So, and then they'll get back to us, and if they say that's okay, then we can start notifying voters and publishing things and.
Yeah. Yeah, sooner we get back, get it back to us.
Oh, well, I just wanted to keep it moving, so.
Oh, yeah.
But yeah, it's not set stone, you can always change it.
Yeah, well, that would. Yeah, I don't think that one week matters.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Move that last one to September eleventh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Get that going and.
Sounds good.
Hopefully you get it to the state and they'll look at it and say.
Okay.
Well, it does.
Yeah, hopefully they did last time, but you know.
As long as you kept it within their parameters and the state will dictate yours.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be any problem with it.
Yep. Hopefully not.
With them, so.
And if they throw us a curve, then we have every district meeting again and redo this.
I don't know, how, how would you change it?
Uh, they could change, I, I don't know, they could change your supervisor, they're in charge of the supervisor.
So they could just say, oh, this is a really great. Yeah.
No, they could just say, we don't like these five, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna send it at a different, we're gonna pick different areas.
Draw the map.
Redraw the map.
Oh, okay.
Cause that's what they're supposed to do. The Legislative Services Agency, the map for you, the supervisors, we're doing just voting precincts.
Well.
Which is very confusing and fact.
I guess it is, it's crazy.
They should meet first and then.
Yeah. Yeah.
The mistreats and then we make it work, but.
Mm-hmm.
Unless they do that, unless they do it that way, so that we do do the legislative.
Yeah, 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 that's true. Like, oh, do this one, then the counties will have to kinda come up with a.
That's right.
That would be great.
They want.
Mm-hmm.
Now the. Towns that are highlighted in red, are those the voting precincts?
So it is each town and the settlement.
Okay, yeah.
Um, other than mining, mining's overrun.
Hmm, okay.
We only have like fifty or less voters in mining, is that not right? So it's, it's very expensive to have a voting precinct for that, I don't think you do.
I don't know if you could write a check that small.
You could write a check that small for me.
I'll have to look at mine.
I actually had a small one last month, too. It's gonna change this. I guess.
You're gonna be here.
I gotta go to town on the third already.
Coast Colorado. Hot?
Actually, it wasn't too bad. It really, the weather wasn't too hot. It had been, and then it was hit that way again, but while we were there, it was pretty decent. But then we were only there for. Hmm, let's see, we got there about noon on Friday, and we were there Saturday, and we left at noon on Sunday, so. Quick trip.
Yeah.
That's great stuff.
Granddaughter Holmes, she's already got three days of school in.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, she started school last Wednesday.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we got landfill today, I did.
Hmm?
Got landfill Thursday night.
Mm-hmm.
I get come from a ton of the land.
We need to pick one up. You need that one, okay, thank you. How's Larry today?
Good, all right.
Good.
Looks like they blew their office supply, but they're. I don't know.
Yeah, they did.
It's extravagant, bud.
They did that right away, too. They're all fancy.
Yeah, but then they had to have deflectors put up.
Had to do what?
On the vents, you know.
Yeah, deflectors. Make the air come this way.
You can't go rough in that, can you? They done pretty good, even when they turned the keys over to the building. That was in two thousand.
Yep.
Twenty-three years later.
Sure went fast.
That rental house didn't last that long.
Depends on your tenant.
Pretty good, it's getting with it.
Yeah, damn, wine is expensive, that was.
Mm-hmm. Wasn't the cheapest of weeks.
Oh. No. I had some big bills in there.
Six thousand dollars. Holy smoke.
Could they have a few of the bristers out there and do a big can?
Yeah, no doubt.
Have them, easy, maybe.
We just had in the middle school, then, and she, they, all they do is write them on, write them on the illness stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Good kidding.
You know, part of that district may have been the easy part, if I had two more chairs, it could have.
Do a little remodeling, aren't we, rush together?
Huh?
Have to do some remodeling, aren't we?
Yeah, for sure.
Well, we're both fortunate to get reelected, I'm not sitting any closer to Bill, because. He might be able to reach me.
Yeah, you can't touch each other.
We're gonna put him in that corner right there.
Face the wall, yeah.
We could put the rise right behind him, that.
Yeah, there you go. Oh, there you go, you look like judges.
Yeah, yeah. Put the chair up there.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go, the chair.
Be like a.
Left and right.
King in his court, king in his court. By the way, Bill, I don't know why you get so uptight about running a meeting, cause I ran it flawless last week.
Flawless, right?
Your laughs are gonna give me away.
If I remember right.
Oh, yeah, you were on the phone.
I was on the phone, I kept hearing this. Gotta vote on it.
Uh, I thought about this week, is I helped time do was going on something else, I.
You gotta vote on that.
It's like, I, I thought to myself, it was like, damn, why didn't you just write it down?
You know, you did it, I, I do it, do, 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 do.
My first start this in January, I had a cheat card.
I'm gonna share the cheat card, no?
Yeah. Thanks for leaving me, Andy.
Uh, yeah, it's. It throws you a little bit. It'll get you stuck.
Well, I was just so nervous filming shoes, that's what it was.
No matter what you do, there's always room for improvement, things like.
Sound like a coach, that's right.
So the guy told me, I've heard supervisor.
I don't know what you're gonna do on that cabinet back there, cause I always use that magnet for three strokes, not a good idea. Moving the new shop yet?
Huh?
Did they move the new shop yet?
No, no, today, I think it's supposed to be the walk here, isn't it?
Haven't heard.
Well, I think it was supposed to be last Monday. This is according Pat.
I haven't, I haven't heard anything.
He's not involved with it, so he's kinda about her. We got the. I don't think, would they move in there, Bill, without that being done in the storage?
Well, I don't know. I wouldn't think so. I don't know, you could.
I wouldn't think so either.
I'd recommend they wouldn't.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you do something?
Then he's, then you gotta buy, I mean, we're gonna gap the shit, are we buying new shelving, or is that shelving going over? I mean.
I have no idea.
All that kinda stuff's gotta be in there first.
Yeah, you gotta have the shelving and stuff in there, they gotta have that floor done first.
Yeah, I, I know.
And I hadn't heard if they even decided on anything on that floor.
I thought we.
We kinda, we told them to do that fiber thing that, um, Jeff had suggested.
Yeah, I think that's what they're gonna do.
Okay.
I didn't realize there was fiber in it.
Yeah, you, well, it was.
It's a sealer.
A sealer with a fill thing in it, component to it.
Right, yeah.
So the little bumps are not gonna be felt, it'll still, it'll level it all off and make it look better.
Yeah.
Not perfect, but.
Start moving in and then, and then have to do it.
Yeah. And I'd heard some other things about the rest of the floor, too.
When are we gonna put that sealer on it?
I don't know, I thought they were gonna get it to it right away.
That was what I thought.
But.
All the things work.
Well, the sealer, well, Joel said they sealed the whole floor. Oh, really? Now they've sealed the whole floor, and now we gotta go back in and put this other sealer, so we're gonna, before they sealed it over the bad spots, we're gonna have to grind it back off again. I guess, I don't know. We'll have to see when Ben gets here, but. That bad concrete kinda made a.
I got it, that's unfortunate, that shouldn't happen. Pay attention, is the quilt still up there on the wall?
No, when she passed away, her family came.
Oh, good.
Got it, and they displayed it after her funeral, and then.
It was supposed to have been there for years.
Yeah, it was only supposed to be there for a year, and then it sounded like the quilt was gonna go home with the family members, so.
Good, good.
Yeah.
That's where it needs to be.
Yeah, I'm surprised she passed away.
Yeah, it'd be too bad.
She and her husband spent a lot of work into that courthouse.
Every county.
They have history on each of them.
One of them's got two.
Yeah, there was one county that has two.
Southern, south central.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So was Mike moving when he had this here, where did he?
He was doing really good, he wasn't using a cane or anything, and.
Yeah, damn.
Yeah, yeah, he looked really good.
Remember he was surgery.
Yeah, I don't know if he had some surgery or was going through an illness or what.
He was in the hospital for something, I don't know. He was just kinda fell apart.
Mm-hmm. But yeah, no, he looked really good when he was here last year, yeah.
He calls her one time.
Oh, that's nice.
Knowing he was here in eighty-seven, this is right, and then he resigned from that to run while his term is probably up.
Mm-hmm.
And run for state legislature.
Oh, okay. I didn't know he ran for state. He said he, I'd asked him about lobbying, and he said he did that for fourteen years, he was a lobbyist.
Did that mean?
He was a lobbyist for fourteen years, when.
How many years?
Fourteen. So he's been very involved in the government for a long time, it sounds like.
Yep, and he was a good lobbyist in the fact that, you know, ISAC was made up. He never.
Yeah, where Mike.
Oh, okay.
His successors, he's pretty obvious.
Oh, okay. They need to be a little more even keeled. They needed to be a little more even.
Yeah, well, there's a statute of limitations.
Not true.
Yeah.
Not, yeah, imparting.
Yeah, impartial, there you go.
Yes.
Yeah.
Pretty much what. And we said. I'm ready for surgery now.
Okay.
Huh?
I'm ready for surgery now.
That's right. So, yes. How'd you figure it out, tell her.
Tell me?
Yeah.
Oh, it's, it's team of township.
Oh.
Oh, he put me uphill from Richard, so I don't know. Oh.
That poor girl, she, Richard was uphill, and it was like.
Towering over her, huh?
So I just whisked him around, and boom, the question was answered.
Next time, next week I'll wear heels, there you go. That's what happened, he'll be more evenly keeled there.
I didn't see a problem before Kurt got out there.
Do you imagine that, he causing trouble?
Are you in there, gee?
Will you rest it up after your two, two late nights?
Okay. Are you working?
My student.
I was there on Sunday, and I wasn't out as late as you, so.
I know, I know.
Yeah. Oh.
Yes.
Yes. It's actually, it leaves, and then all the people. Uh, just, just.
Oh, we found out the predictive thing. Oh, my gosh.
We're still going through our quarter here, yeah. I'm gonna want to follow.
Wow.
Let's cover it left, we just kept with that.
Jason has any, any ideas?
I'll be there, yeah.
No.
Yeah.
I'm Dan.
Hanging in there, wanna play this.
The range will, yeah.
Back.
Is there anything for me, so I guess he doesn't want any of our credits?
Yeah, I was. Nope. I don't think so.
We all, we just running at lunch.
I knew, well.
You guys pick it up, he holds for us. He back in, who, he sees all of it.
He back?
Bored, weren't ya? You were so blessed to stay in.
I know.
Isn't that amazing? It's just wonderful, there's just nobody else like that, like them, but. And their shirts, full of their experience. And you still tell you whatever they want, they've got on their mind. And they keep listening to them, too. You just sit there and listen to them. The band, they're all.
It's a possibility. Uh, we're gonna.
The weather, the dry solid.
Well, it'll probably.
Sounds good.
Dry.
Yeah, and it's sandy.
Twins.
They always. Let them down there, they just break a race.
Yeah, it's actually saving money when it's not.
It is.
Garrison? What's at the hall or is it?
Same thing, I was just waiting for his conversation to be done back there.
Sorry, I didn't, I couldn't hear where the, it sounded like. Thank you. I know. Do you need a lot of blankets? I do.
Have to bring.
Well, I tried to.
Likes it too, but.
All goes by numbers.
Is he?
Move to a different.
But. Dan's gonna have to step up and be careful. I think we need to counter stuff.
He's kinda worried.
Because. So we don't know. Who knows, I mean, you know what I'm saying. Child of, yes.
Vacation.
A child of.
Yes.
Have two of those.
Don't ever let one get in there.
I think the law versus the sun.
I haven't got any emails. Last, right, late, I gotta.
How many did you?
So I texted this morning, you're right away. Be good. This normally, down there. Send it on the agenda and. Cause like all of a sudden. That's all.
I'm glad I told you, man.
Yeah, yeah, I figured we'd go through quite a deal.
Really need to do directions. He says, right now, this is your. You're okay, he said, all we gotta do is just turn the rotors. He said, if you go get the metal metal, he says, then you change the rotors, and that was funny. It's like, I need to get that up there before we start going metal to metal.
Yeah, you didn't want that to hurt you. Was there any reason?
I'm thinking this week.
You guys were happy with everything.
I'll get it on there.
Unless, Richard.
Yeah, but I don't do it for six years every day. I don't see the arguments out of them.
They want more than they used to.
The mouse, there's another one.
Oh, they're up there?
So, yeah, it's.
I just got through everything.
Just, just the hurricane thing I had to talk about today.
It's about this.
She, she did well.
Twenty-four. Oh, okay. I was walking.
Yeah.
They called four times, we tried to get it worked out, so.
And they all had to get home.
Yeah.
Joel's birthday was.
Yeah, Holly was home from. Oh, I, Coach Mark in wrestling. And then when I was out in California, I was out there for a stint, he actually called by her state, uh, in high school, I coached him in, in middle school. And then this senior year, he got to the. Went to state, so I called him from California, wishing luck, he knew he was already in bed. He brought something out of state. Lemon jacket.
I was in the.
Yeah.
Oh, it's huge.
How about that?
I think we stood in line forty-five minutes.
I bet, yeah. Yeah, it went through my mind a little bit, and it's like.
It is.